I will call the meeting of the Christiansburg Town Council to order. We're going to take a moment of reflection and a moment of silence in memory of the victims of the Las Vegas, Nevada shooting. And if you see on the board, I think we have the names of all of those that lost their lives. Thank you. Thanks for standing for the pledge of allegiance, and I'm going to ask soon to be retiring Councilman Cor Hall.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Are there any adjustments to the agenda? Hearing none. We're going to deviate just a little bit. Mr. Collins, I think you have guests in the audience that we'd like to recognize.
I do, yes, sir. We're trying to establish a program with the Christiansburg High School to get students involved with us, you know, to give them some experience and to get their participation here to help us, you know, make decisions here. And we have a young lady, Alexandra Call, she'll stand please, who's from Virginia Tech, she's a sophomore at Tech, and she's helping us with this project, and she's actually getting credits for helping us. And she came through a planning commission this last year, and she was working on her project then, and we asked her if helping us would help her, and she said it would, so that's how we got together, and she's a wonderful young lady.
She's very passionate, very driven with what she's doing.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I appreciate you being here, too.
Absolutely.
Mr. Collins, you had an opening remark.
Well, Mayor Barbara, I just want to say that, you know, people looking at me tonight can see that there's a little change in my appearance, and now I come back and I tell you, a lot of people that, you know, being on the town council is not that easy.
Welcome, Mayor. I mean, we're going to...
And then, and then some people say, "Well, Henry did it, didn't he?" And I said, "No, Henry did not do it," you know.
Thank you.
But I just want to bring this out. I'm not sure if people know this, but I had cancer six years ago, pretty extensive, and so I have to go get... The doctors keep a pretty close eye on me, and they found up a couple of little spots on me, and they, they took it off today. And just to you people in general, you know, you just can't mess around with cancer. If you haven't had yourself checked out lately, you should. Thank you.
Thank you. Alrighty, so there are no other adjustments or any adjustments to the agenda. Running a public hearings tonight. Okay, under the consent agenda, it's council meeting minutes for September the 26th, 2017, resolution in support of extra mile day 2017, approval of a notice of award for the church, rigby, and ellitt drainage improvement project, and authorize the interim town manager to enter into a construction contract on behalf of the town with DCI Shires Incorporated for the amount of $1,193,415. Contract form subject to approval by the town attorney. Approval to the notice of award of town rate stream restoration and authorize the interim town manager to enter into a construction contract on behalf of the town with Atkins Excavating in the amount of $519,201. Contract subject to approval by the town attorney. We need to schedule a public hearing on November the 28th, 2017, for a rezoning request by John Neal Gay and Neal Incorporated for agent for Sarah Crawford, tax map numbers 530-2-85B, 86A, and 87A, and portions of tax map number 530A1 located in the corner of Glade Drive, southeast, and Curtis Drive, from A Agriculture to R3 multifamily residential. The property is designated as residential on future land map use of the 2013 Christiansburg Comprehensive Plan. Contingent upon the rezoning request, scheduled public hearing for November 28th, 2017, for a conditional use permit request by John Neal Gay and Neal Incorporated for tax map numbers 530-2, 85B, 86A, 87A, and portions of the tax map number 530A1, located in the corner of Glade Drive, southeast, and Curtis Drive, southeast, for planned housing development consisting of up to 60 single-family dwellings in the R3 multifamily residential district.
Mr. Mayor, I approve that we approved the consent agenda items B through F. I'd ask for A to be separated since I was at the statewide best practice meeting for child abuse during the 26th meeting, therefore I would need to abstain from approving of the council meeting minutes on that particular occasion.
Second. The motion in the second, B through F.
Yes.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, since Mr. Nelson is here, the items C and D, are those any unpleasant surprises with the, with the bids as opposed to what you were expecting in the cost estimates?
They were lower than expected.
On both cases?
All of the cases.
Okay, thank you. Okay, that's it for me.
Any other questions? Madam Clerk, I'm going to issue B through F.
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop.
Aye.
Councilman Collins.
Aye.
Councilman Hall.
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard.
Aye.
Councilman Shawalter.
Aye.
Councilman Stipes.
Aye.
That is six items. There's a motion to accept the council meeting minutes of September the 26th, 2017.
I make a motion to accept the consent agenda item A.
Okay.
Second.
Got a motion in the second. Any further discussions? Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop.
Aye.
Councilman Collins.
Aye.
Councilman Hall.
Abstain.
Councilman Hubbard.
Aye.
Councilman Shawalter.
Aye.
Councilman Stipes.
Aye.
That is 501. Thank you very much. Citizens' comments. This is a section of the meeting that we encourage citizens to come forward and make comment, questions concerning the town. Anyone here to address other citizens' comments? Seeing none, close the citizens' comments section. Under introductions and presentations, Randy?
Have none.
We've got none. Committee reports, street committee report recommendation on subdivision plot of flipped in Phase One planned residential development of tax map number 435A40 located off Quinn W Stewart Boulevard, 82 lots.
While Andrew's pulling that up, or he has it up, this is an item that council acted on about six months ago. This is Todd Robinson's development, what's the name, States and Homes. If you recall, we had approved R1 in, back behind the villas and adjacent to the villas, and about six months ago, there was a request that came before council to densify a certain section of that to R3. Is that correct? It's R3. And it did, it did pass council, and this is basically the final act of that, the capitulation of that in the subdivision plot. So if you want to pull that up, the plot itself, there you go. That's the... Okay. So we, so this is basically, like I said, the final act in letting him begin construction out there with the higher density in that particular area, the R3 area. We reviewed it in detail in the street committee. It does conform to our subdivision ordinance, and the street committee recommends approval of the plot as presented. And I'll make that recommendation in the form of a motion. Second.
Got a motion in the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop.
No.
Councilman Collins.
Aye.
Councilman Hall.
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard.
Aye.
Councilman Shawalter.
Aye.
Councilman Stipes.
Aye.
Thank you. That is 51. Subdivision plot of tax map number 558A24 located west of Parkway Drive, southeast, and north of Tanglewood Drive, southeast, and Jones Street, southeast, lots, I'm sorry, two lots.
This also council acted on recently, maybe perhaps even our last meeting, or was it our last meeting? This is the Montgomery County's purchase of the Cox Family Farms, and it's come to the attention of a certain aspect of that in the lower left-hand corner where it says new property line is actually, is going to be retained by the Cox Family Farms, which will probably be to the liking of the residents across the street. And so this, this plot represents the change in that with the new property line that Cox Family Farms is going to retain that partial of in the lower left-hand corner. And the street committee recommends approval of the plot as presented, and make that recommendation in the form of a motion. Second.
Motion in the second. Any discussion, questions, comments? Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop.
Aye.
Councilman Collins.
Aye.
Councilman Hall.
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard.
Aye.
Councilman Shawalter.
Aye.
Councilman Stipes.
Aye.
This is 60. Thank you very much. Discussion and actions by council. Mayor, resolution supporting the amendment of chapter 638 of 2010 Virginia Acts of Assembly relating to New River Valley Emergency Communications Regional Authority. This is a carryover item from September 26th, 2017. Mr. Wingfield?
And you actually have a revised resolution and wording for the Acts of General Assembly in front of you. These are basically the recommendation on the policy board from their vote yesterday. In the Acts of Assembly, they basically, the only change from what's in the packet is that they provided dates in for the actions. There was a blank line in there previously. But basically, the Acts of Assembly as proposed would allow council veto authority over any changes to the funding formula, otherwise it would remain at 1/4%. My only concern with it is that it might make it a little tough to, because it has to go back to board for action, that we want to tie down the funding formula to everybody's satisfaction. But of course, like I say, everyone would have to agree to the funding formula. All four member jurisdictions would have to agree to the funding formula, so we all have to be comfortable with it. Board gave us assurances that it will be to everyone's liking, so that...
Or it stays the same.
Or it stays at 1/4%.
Okay. Is this for one year, or is this continuous?
25%. This is until the board should decide to study it again in the future.
Okay. Now, this documented, you passed out this evening. Dr. Wilson is here this evening, and we did receive, as council, we received the proposed changes that the attorney drafted probably a week and a half ago, and this is unchanged from that, except for what you noted?
What you received a couple of weeks ago is actually some wording that I had provided in the council packet, was the wording from the board, with the exception of the dates. There was a line in for the, I think, four or five dates in the...
They're in the book.
And there's, and what's in front of me.
And this, this...
This resolution matches the resolution recommended by the board.
Okay.
So basically, they want all four member jurisdictions to adopt the same resolution.
Well, I, I will go ahead and make a motion that we approve this resolution, and I will also thank Dr. Wilson, and of course, vicariously, the rest of the board for understanding our concerns, and in the same spirit of this authority form, we want to continue that, that same karma, I guess.
Absolutely.
And we appreciate your, your facilitation of this. And so I'll make a motion that we approve the resolution.
Second. Got a motion in the second. Any discussion?
Mr. Wingfield, the as presented, with the modifications that are within the current, in the current form in which we're looking at now, this is, would be the blue writing, correct?
Correct.
This is not part of our, our packet in this form?
That's correct. It was in the packet with the exceptions, so the dates are now included.
Right. This is in its entirety here, with the struck language and the, and what would be the corporate language pursuant to the board, correct?
Correct. This is what the board acted on.
And my understanding would be, just to make sure I'm clear, the concerns that we had before, that we had discussed at length, were, if memory serves, it's been probably about a month ago that we really looked at it hard, were that the, we had some questions about the figures, we had some questions about the numbers, we had some questions about what I call the variable inputs within the formula itself to generate what would otherwise be our expected contribution, if it went, you know, I think we solved from 34 to 26, and then divided scale everywhere, basically. So I say all that to say this, this would provide our representative to the board a total and complete veto power on modifying that formula...
It actually provided to town council.
To town, to town council, and the default would remain to 25%, unless otherwise modified, correct?
I think what Cor just said, if there's going to be any changes in the whole ramification, our town council has to approve.
Correct.
As do the other three.
As do the three.
So if we can't, if we can't get that...
From our point of view.
We have a default 25%.
Correct.
I think our concerns and interest are protected.
I would agree. I would agree wholeheartedly.
And we want to, we don't want to be, we want to be cooperative on this project to agree, you know? It's a wonderful project, but we just want to make sure that everything comes out in a, in a good way. Certainly. May I be recognized, Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
May I be recognized?
Certainly. Got Sherwood Wilson?
I appreciate the dialogue we've had back and forth very much, and as chair of the board, I'm absolutely confident that in the end, we all want the same thing. And I'm equally confident, and I said yesterday on our authority board meeting, the real issue here is the data.
I agree.
And I am 100% confident that this is not rocket science, that, that when we get the right people around the table, we can come up with data that everybody is confident, is reasonable, and true, and accurate. And once we have that, I'm, I'm positive we can come up with a formula that all four jurisdictions can say, "This is fair, and this is equitable." The issue is the data, and we recognize that, and nobody wants to create a formula that's based on bad data. And until we have data that everybody agrees is fair and equitable, we're not going to do a formula.
And I'll tell you, Dr. Wilson, I think that, I mean, I can speak for myself, but I think the general tenor was of, certainly first and foremost, of us being cognizant of the formula itself and the need for, in the future, to develop a formula that would best recognize the usage, of course. But I think the concern that we had was, again, the data, and knowing that the data is always, to a degree, imperfect science, but yet, we can get much more closer to where the actuals are. I think that was our concerns, we saw a lot, at least me, I should say, my concern. I saw a lot of disparity, and that disparity is, it means dollars and cents to our taxpayers. And so that's where we, our concerns, but I will tell you, the document I have here in front of me, does not concern me. This, I think, is an absolute wonderful compromise amongst all parties, and gives everybody that understanding that we won't go forward until we're all comfortable with what the numbers and the ground are. And I think that's fantastic.
I'm confident that the data, in fact, is a science. It's not an R that it is a science, and then when, when I'm standing here in front of you a year from now, or a year and a half from now, that we can show to everybody's satisfaction that the data is in fact a science, to everybody's satisfaction, and it is what it is.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. So the motion on the floor is to approve the resolution that is in front of you? Okay. Any further discussion? Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop.
Aye.
Councilman Collins.
Aye.
Councilman Hall.
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard.
Aye.
Councilman Shawalter.
Aye.
Councilman Stipes.
Aye.
That is 60. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Dr. Wilson.
Thank you.
And your group, your board, our board, whoever you want to say it.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a quick comment. I think Mr. Shawalter and I both forgot, we neglected to say something. We had a very good meeting this morning, this afternoon, about the concern of the opportunity to go forward on RFP in regards to the...
Well, that's coming up.
That's coming up in...
Where's that?
Council reports.
Council reports.
Oh, we're going to bring it in? Okay. I just want to make sure if there was anything we needed to approve.
I would like to recommend that, Dr. Wilson, if you would, instead of coming to a formal session, if we could talk about the new formula in a work session, and then we can bring it to council, that'd be great.
Sure.
I expect that, that will be some time down the road.
Okay.
Very good. Staff reports? Mr. Wingfield?
Christiansburg High is celebrating their bicentennial this month, and...
We're done.
No, it's happened. I was saying...
I'm sorry. Mr. Collins, give me these final words.
It's, it's mayor.
Christiansburg High is celebrating their bicentennial this month, and I've prepared, I guess, a small package of things to send to them. One would be our reflections book from our bicentennial in '92, also a few of our bicentennial buttons from that celebration, a couple wooden nickels from, from that celebration, and commemorative coin, also some of our Color Town logo pins, and our new navy gold pins. Anything else that you would think appropriate to include in a package to send to them? Just let me know, and we'll pass it on.
When, when are you looking to send that up?
Hopefully within the next couple, couple of weeks. Hopefully maybe next week or so. Also, we do have, I guess, a few more new town stickers on order that we should be getting fairly soon. I think they're due sometime next week, and also a few promotional cups that we'll pass on to.
Bicentennial Saturday.
Saturday. Do we have anything that we've taken off old structures, you know, that we've kept in the closet?
We did keep a few of the bricks from this structure, the decorative, I guess, kind of round bricks from, from the building when it was put in. We've probably got a few of the decorative bricks from the sidewalks that used to be in the Cambry area and downtown here, too.
Yes, something like that, I think, would be pretty neat for them. Are we going to ride it out there, or what do I do? You go drive?
I think we probably, probably mill it unless somebody wants to make a trip.
I'm just teasing, yeah.
Like I say, anything else you would think of, just let me know, and we'll pass it on.
Anything else?
We discussed the curbside recycling, RFP, during the Water, Sewer, Solid Waste Committee meeting, and I think basically the idea there is to go ahead and put that out within the next week, and that's council's wishes. Of course, that doesn't commend us to the project, but it just basically makes us eligible to take proposals.
I'm fine with that.
Yeah?
Absolutely.
Do you feel like you have approval from the entire council? It's sort of a straw poll, but...
Do you want to take a vote, or just not?
I would like that. I don't know if we need a formal vote or not, but at least an informal vote that we would authorize you to go forward.
Yeah, I'd like everybody's on, to be on board with that.
And I'll speak first.
If we address anything.
Yeah, I'll speak first, and I, we, it's, there does be unaware, the RFP, we discussed this evening, Mr. Wingfield had provided it to us, Mr. Langen, a number of individuals from public corps were present, and this is the next step in going to curbside recycling. We've got a chance to review the document. Document reads very well. There's a couple little clerical modifications to it, dates and things, but nothing that's substantive value. And quite frankly, I think going forward, it's one of the more important documents we're dealing with right now. And it's a great initiative.
It's been on council ever since, it's been part of our vision to finally get here, and I just want to appreciate Randy and his staff for getting this ready. I mean, it's something that sort of fell off the truck for a while, but it was great to talk about it and get it going.
Well, you should get a little out of this, too. You kept on sort of pushing that, and I think that's good.
It takes counsel, so... But I would like full support on this RFP.
Would you accept a show of hands that's recorded on public TV?
Sure.
If you're, if you're in favor of this proceeding, thank you.
I'd say that's one thing the public has really, you know, really supported, and I think it's going to play help on the garbage in the long run, and it's going to help on recycling, just a win-win.
Kenneth B. Gibson Memorial Park and Ride dedication is this Saturday at 10:00 a.m., and of course, our gospel singing event is downtown this Saturday.
That's what, 5:00 to 9:00?
I think that's right.
Who's, who's the dedication being sponsored by?
Well, we've asked VDOT to participate, although they haven't gotten back to us. Chris Tuck from Montgomery County Board of Supervisors is speaking, Mayor Barber's speaking, and Delegate Nick Rush is going to be the, I guess, keynote speaker. Also having a presentation from Pudge Legions led by American Legion.
Okay, thank you.
It's 10, 10 o'clock Saturday morning.
Yes.
Got it? Madam Attorney?
I have nothing.
Any other staff reports tonight? Hearing none, council reports. Mr. Collins?
Okay, sir. Christiansburg High School tomorrow night has a homecoming parade, and in conjunction with the homecoming parade, it's supposed to be the long-awaited, the wrestling parade celebrating 16 straight years, so if you can attend that, please do.
When does that start, Eric? It's 7:00?
6 o'clock.
At what time?
6 o'clock. They'll start, I'm not sure exactly what time they'll start closing the streets down, but what, about 3, 4, 5?
Okay.
There are 6, 5. And that's a long symbol down here in front of town hall.
And Mr. Hall, and Alexandra Call, and myself, we met with the school today. This is the sixth meeting we've had with them, something like that, in getting the project going, where the students are going to come here to be a part of our proceedings, and we'll go there and do some stuff with them, too. And we had a meeting there today, and we're supposed to meet with them again in one week. It's a good thing all, you know, worked out, you know, finalized.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Collins. Anything else? Mr. Bishop?
I don't have anything.
Mr. Hall?
Mr. Hall was staying with a lot of his... First and foremost, Randy, my appreciation for the RFP, for the curbside recycling. Again, it may have been a long time coming, but it's here, and I'm so grateful that we are now pushing that out. I think that's a great initiative, and that will prove dividends going forward, we heard from the MRSWA, and I think it's going to certainly extend the life of that facility. And again, I think it gets us in the right framework and frame of mind going forward, that recycling needs to be a very important initiative for our town. Mayor Barbara, I want to thank you for the moment of silence and recognizing the victims of the, I can't call it senseless, because I don't know what to call that had transpired, but I'm still in shock, and probably will be for the next many months and, and weeks of months. But I do appreciate you doing that. I think it's important that we recognize...
I'd like to say, Alexa Miller, you put that together for us.
Right. I really do appreciate that. I think that, that was very important. And also, Ms. Call, I know we've already recognized her, but she is the epitome of someone who, look, she's not even a member of our town, and yet she's working with us because she's passionate about, passionate about young people. She and I have that in common, and she's up at these meetings. She's already emailed us with the Harrisonburg, which is kind of a model. Harrisonburg does a really good job when it comes to engaging their local school population and getting them involved, and we've heard a lot from her. And she asked us this evening, I said, "Do you mind? It's another thing to ask you to do. Maybe if you could give us some information?" It wasn't two hours later, I had the email sitting there with me and Harry. She said, "Hey, here's who to talk to, here's who I'm going to talk to, this is what I'm going to do." It's that type of initiative, initiative and drive and motivation and just dedication, passion, that is contagious and infectious, and I hope that you don't, regardless of sometimes from cold water being poured on your efforts, today may be a case in point to a small degree, I hope that you don't lose that, because that is what helps, again, us out, and I'm very appreciative of your efforts. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Hubbard?
No.
Mr. Shawalter?
Regional Commission. I do have a small report from there. Part of our discussion, New River Community College is finally joining the regional commission, so will be the only commission with three total institutions of higher learning. Commission, so will be the only commission with three total institutions of higher learning, that's Rafford University, Virginia Tech's already there.
That's great.
And they make a huge impact to the Regional Commission, and, and they're great partners with that. Um, actually, most of those members serve as, um, as our chairs. They've been in this for a few years, and they do a great job doing it. By doing that, we are, the current commission is reaching out to the towns of Dublin, Pembroke, Lynnland, uh, with an invitation to become a member so that we, we, um, meet our guidelines of membership. Renew the New, I don't know if anybody's familiar with it. Giles County started this years ago, and of course it, it expanded. Um, there were thirty miles of the New River clean, they do it once a year, they look for volunteers, four hundred and seventy-five volunteers this year, four hundred tires pulled out of the river, and, uh, twelve tons of trash. So it was definitely successful, uh, Renew the New. If, if nobody's participated in, it goes from Rafford all the way to Giles, and, uh, again, Giles County's done a terrific job getting this thing started for this vital resource for our, um, region. Um, there's a small business, it's not necessarily an incubator, but it's, um, something we've discussed and, um, something I'm gonna discuss further with council once I learn more about it, but it's, I wouldn't say it's an incubator, but it's a, it's a nonprofit organization called RonookSmallBusiness.org, at least that's their, uh, web address, and they're there to help people who want to go into business for themselves with vast resources. Kevin Berg, uh, the Regional Commission, um, he, he had great things to say about it, um, and this is something, again, Montgomery County participates in and a lot of our region, it's something we may want to look into participating, uh, or at least funding, help fund, uh, because it does help a lot of Christiansburg residents, and it gets, it fills that gap, you know, if you want to go into your, uh, if you want to start your dream of going to a small business and have no idea how to do it, and you can't Google it, uh, this organization be the one that, one that you can sit down with for free and find out how to do it. So it's something we need to look a little bit more in, and I know that our, our, our regional municipalities are participating in it. And then, um, you know, some of the things we want to think about, the rel depot in Christiansburg, uh, there's discussions that, and Mike, you were part of that, I guess, September twenty-eighth, was that it? Or?
September twentieth.
Twenty.
We were, we were otherwise occupied.
Yeah, it's something we want to start paying attention to. I think there's gonna be some questions out there on who's responsible for costs regionally and things like that, and I'm sure everybody's gonna chip in, 'cause it's gonna benefit the whole region, but it's something we need to start paying attention to and getting more information, especially when it becomes, when it comes closer to it being established within the town limits. Um, that's all I have from the Regional Commission. I do, um, you know, we've all seen the paper, uh, I believe it was last week, a couple small businesses downtown, Mr. Call, and I believe the Optical Center downtown, they've commissioned to have these sculptures of fish, um, uh, to be put up in downtown, really to promote downtown, and, you know, we all, if we're all familiar with, of course, the Hokie Bird, they did their, that around Blacksburg, and that was a success, and, uh, Seaback, which is Central Business Commission that, um, Sam and I were on for a number of years, that was in our wheelhouse, sort of, always mentioned, some sort of promotion, um, something, if anybody's been to Abington in recent years, they, they had the Wolves, and that was sort of their, their promotion, so, and that's why I'm gonna, I, if council would like, I would like to look further into it to see how we can participate, participate, how we can sort of sponsor or get, get, um, corporate sponsorship and sort of expand this. Uh, I know Mr. Call and his partners have put a substantial amount of money into having these, uh, fish sculptures, uh, done, a substantial amount, my Jew. This is a private business starting this, this isn't your municipality just starting this on their own and having no support. He started this, and it was in the paper, I've received a lot of great feedback from it. Um, I called him personally to thank him for this and ask if we could, uh, sort of jump in and have a conversation about it, but what I'm looking at, if, if council, I would like to take this as central business, um, and look further into it, okay? 'Cause we'd have to have some sort of corporate, corporate sponsorship, we just can't do it all ourselves, but also have a program for this, so that we can work side by side with Mr. Call and his colleagues, and see if we can do some sort of promotion like Abington did, and like Blacksburg and Virginia Tech did with the Hokie Bird. But I would like for council to, you know, support this, at least us looking into it before. I put a lot of, and Sam puts a lot of time into this, what do you guys say?
Well, here, I'll tell you, it, it kind of goes back to a little bit of a branding mission, uh, in and of itself. Um, and, uh, of course, we're all very familiar with the Hokie Bird and, and all around Blacksburg, and heck, we even look for them now, and we, we always have, I guess.
We still have one at the Aquatic Center.
Right, I know, and I think, uh, I, I remember getting this article at the time and read it, and I thought it was really very interesting. Um, that would be down here in the, uh, the mall area downtown, but, uh, if, if you're looking for approval, I think it's a fantastic idea, and if we can get on board with it, and also, you know, I think it helps us to, to create that type of, uh, again, I call brand, it's not, it's our brand as far as the town, but it's, it's a mechanism which we use that, that will be synonymous with the town somewhat and throughout our business community, so I, I, I think it's a fantastic idea.
And we keep it centrally, Cambria, downtown, and that's your promotion, you know, Aquatic Center's considered downtown of sorts as well. So, but it's something, you know, where it's gonna take significant hours, uh, especially... Where are they going, Cor? Well, that's what we want, oh!
In the, in the planner box, I think, right in front of, right in front of Old Town.
I think he's five, he commissioned five. And they're gonna be different colors, and, and, and they're gonna look different, and, um, I really didn't get into my conversation with him about how they found, uh, how they happened upon fish, but I was just so enamored that a private group took it upon themselves at, and I'm telling you guys, significant expense to anybody in the private industry to do this, to, and to promote our downtown without our input. And that's why I'd like for us to sort of partner with them, not, not overshadow what they're doing, but sort of enhance, um, 'cause, you know, we have a footprint in downtown, and I'm sure a lot of businesses would like to participate in this, and it would be part of our branding, uh, like Cor said, mechanism for downtown, so I just want to get council's support to look into it, and then we can go further once we find out more information.
Sounds a little fishy to me.
So we did an audio vision, raising our hands, I think, I think it's a great idea.
And I'd like to invite Harry, and he's very vocal about this topic.
So that's called Central Business, which is you and Bishop separate?
I'm not even laughing, Harry.
So we'll get a, you, you're out with this guy? You just see your hands?
It's a great idea. Absolutely.
I wouldn't stop there, I wouldn't say that we ought to discuss, you know, matching brands and stuff like that.
Yep.
Any business, some of them want to, do something special and unique in there that we can provide matching brands, you know, I can see, uh, that is my personal thought to encourage that, and say, "Yeah, we'll be your partners, not just in words."
Right.
And deeds.
And that's it for me.
Uh, one brief recognition of a staff member, um, we learned, I have permission to say this, but, uh, Wayne, Wayne's assistant, Todd Walters, got an email today, and I'm very proud of Todd, known him for all the years that I have, but Mr. Walters will, uh, in early November will be taking over the, uh, town manager position of New Market, Virginia, which is a beautiful little community in Shenandoah County, and I'm very excited for him. Uh, and now we'll have a friend up the valley as well, and he's got a lot of excitement, and I'm sure he'll do very well at that job. Um, the second item, uh, going along with what, uh, Mr. Collins said, um, the high school and the street committee, I shouldn't mention this during the street committee report, just to let, uh, to make this a more meaningful involvement of our high school community, uh, one item is before the street committee right now is consider, considering the naming of the Route one fourteen to North Franklin Street Connector, to give it some personality, give it some identity, and, you know, start generating, uh, excitement about that. And there's some logical names, it could be the Quinn Stewart Boulevard Extension, uh, it will be crossing what formerly was the Christiansburg Institute property, but, uh, the street committee is, uh, assigning that task to the high school students, uh, that, coordination to give us some ideas for that. Um, and it's nothing, it's nothing we have to act on.
This is Hubbard Triangle?
No, this is the road. This is the road that's going through our new park, the, the major, the major connector route, uh, to give it a name and to start, you know, talking about it, giving it a personality and a, you know, identity, rather than just a connector road, and, uh, but just to let, let you know, uh, that that's one step we're taking to, you know, engage them, and they might come up with some, some great ideas for that.
Did you ever think one time when that Patrick's Way was the paper road that it would, that's kind of been thrown out there for years, but...
You are, you're referring to the road that's gonna go right across from Trinity Baptist Church and go all the way through to Cambria.
Yes.
I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, it's a great assignment, homework assignment.
Yeah, you're creating ownership with our young...
And it's Mr. Collins' idea.
Well, on the other side of the coin, what would you think about me asking them Montgomery Museum people if they have any ideas?
Well, I'm just reporting on the, on our initial step here, moving step, but I think we'll see what they come up with, and...
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, we don't have to...
Let's, let's leave it at this point with the high school, and let's see what our future, future leaders can come up with.
I think it'd be neat, it'll give us a good start.
Yes, it gives us something to talk about.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay, that's it, thanks, Mason.
Um, not a whole lot, last, well, I mean, on Friday night, the twenty-eighth, I don't think we've met since then, they had the Saint Battleship at the Aquatic Center, was a rousing success, it was, uh, I know Mr. Hubbard was there, several of us, several people in the audience were there, uh, quite a lot of enthusiasm, I think probably seventeen, eighteen teams, uh, participated, but, uh, a lot of videos on Facebook and places around that said, uh, I've already had a couple of the first responders ask if this can be an annual event, and I think it will be, but it was, it was very well received.
They even asked me that maybe you, council, would have a team next year, and I said, "Well, I don't."
Look around here. You think we're getting a load up?
Okay, is there, uh, that, that's all I have, is anything else?
We got one more thing to bring up, Arts Council meeting next Wednesday, eighteenth, at seven o'clock, but of course that is the same time as the candidates form.
Okay.
What, what meeting is next Wednesday?
It's Arts Council.
Oh, the Arts Council.
Yeah, Marty's been working a little bit on that thing for us, I appreciate that.
Yes.
Getting it started. All right. Any other business? Mr. Bishop?
All right. Request for a closed meeting under Virginia Code Section two point two dash thirty-seven eleven A one for the discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees or employees of any public body. A closed meeting is in reference to the town manager position, and that's in form of a motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.